I hereby reconvene this workshop of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors in open meeting and request the clerk of the board to conduct a roll call certification vote of the supervisors to be included in the minutes of this meeting.
Do you certify that at best of your knowledge that the only matters discussed in the closed meeting were business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting conducted? Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig.
Aye.
Mr. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Melton.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye. Thank you. I now call this meeting to order. I'm going to lead us in the pledge. Mr. Tucker's going to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord, give us the guidance tonight to do the people's business. Help us be fair in our deliberations. Give us the wisdom to know what's the right thing to do, given the many examples that we have, many options that we had in making our choices. We ask it in your name.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Have a request to postpone agenda items.
Move that we approve the formal agenda as presented by the county administrator.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. At this time, before we move on to item six, I want to move one item forward and make an act. I'm going to move item number...
Eleven B.
Eleven B. At this time, forward, and I'm going to ask that for a motion to defer.
Mr. Chairman, some move.
Second. So we'll defer this item. Let me further clarify. We'll defer this item to our August Board of Supervisors meeting. And that is, I will make sure for the public, that's Resolution R. 2015-63, authorized the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to execute a memorandum of understanding with certain Constitution officers and establishing various policies for Constitution officers not subject to a NMOU. So we're going to move that to our August meeting. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. At this time, I'll, we'll have a formal certification, certificates of appreciation, I apologize, and we have a presentation from Dr. Gary Rhodes, President of J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College. Dr. Rhodes, thank you for waiting. We do apologize to the rest of public for being late.
You were worth waiting for. Chairman Melton, Board of Supervisors, and Mrs. Wyler, it's great to come back again this year and report on, briefly, on how things are going with J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College and Powhatan County. And I would like to acknowledge that we have Jimmy and Ann Moore here with me tonight. And Ann, of course, is the Powhatan appointee to our Reynolds Community College Board, does a great job. She's been a terrific board member. And then I have Joe Schilling with me also, who's our Director of Communications, Special Assistant to the President. So what I have is a prezi. It's not a PowerPoint. So you have a one-page summary in front of you because where PowerPoint can be printed off as pages in a book, prezi really can't quite, doesn't work that way. So you'll see the screen here, and I guess I'll look up here and see, and talk a little bit. And so let me just quickly go through this, and then Mrs. Moore would like to make a comment or two, and then see if you have any questions. So, is today's decision in the best interest of our students? This is our annual, my annual update to all of you, and as, as you know, our college's lead value statement simply is, is today's decision in the best interest of our students. So if I were a Powhatan County Supervisor, I would imagine that my most, the loftiest probably value statement I could have is, is today's decision in the best interest of our Powhatan citizens, right? In fact, very similar to the invocation that was offered tonight. So, Reynolds by the numbers. We're the third-largest community college in Virginia. We serve almost nineteen thousand credit students, or did this past year. And there is a, an interesting relationship, it's a national trend, between community colleges and enrollments. And when the economy goes bad, guess what happens? People get laid off. Many of them come back to community colleges. In fact, there was a period of time there a few years ago, when I thought every other student wanted to be a nurse, just because there was such a demand for nurses. Economy picks up, and the community college enrollments go down some because these students are then going back to work. So, since the college was opened in nineteen seventy-two, we've served three hundred and twenty-nine thousand students. And we do serve five counties and the city, full of City of Richmond. So we serve Powhatan, Goochlin, Louisa, Hanover, and Henrico County, and then the whole city. And twenty-three percent of our students are first-generation college students as well. To me, that's a very powerful reality that we work with. If I, if I could give, I know we have someone from the paper here tonight, so I don't mind highlighting this for her or you, but if I had two facts that I wish people would think about every now and then, because they're really impressive. One is, one out of every four workers in the greater Richmond region has attended Reynolds Community College, and one out of every three healthcare workers. That's a lot of people, because it's a lot of training that we've done. So I want to just quickly give you a brief sense of kind of the world that we live in and the world that we try to support in terms of education and training. From the sixty-thousand-foot national perspective, the forty-thousand-foot state perspective, the twenty-thousand-percent regional, twenty-thousand-foot regional perspective, and then ten-thousand-foot, which would be the Powhatan as a county. So from the national perspective, we have heard, the Lumina Foundation, that sixty-five percent of the jobs in the U.S. will require some form of post-secondary education by 2020, yet fewer than forty percent of Americans are educated beyond high school. So, these are some bullet points that are going on in the national landscape. In the bottom one, growing qualified worker shortage. So it really doesn't matter if you're with any group of businesspeople, and they're talking about what their needs are to be successful as a business. Top on that list is that there's a worker shortage. They just can't get enough people with the skills that they need to fill the jobs that they have. And a big part of that is also the soft skills area. In fact, we've had, I've had employers tell me for twenty-five-plus years that our technical training is great at whatever college I was working at, even if it were less great, give us somebody with a good work ethic, who had good values, who knew how to communicate well, who could be a good critical thinker. And so our chancellor has recently created a task force to see if we can evaluate and measure that somehow, which he's asked me to chair, because I guess I keep making the observation that the soft skills are so very, very important. So, the qualified worker shortage is predominantly in the middle skill positions. Now, what do I mean by that? This is true in the state, too. So as statewide perspective, there are two Virginias, and people don't often know this. It's very, very impressive, and it's a little bit scary at the same time. And you probably can't read it from there, but on the right side, it says, if we took the Golden Crescent, which goes through northern Virginia, captures Tidewater, captures the greater Richmond region, and separated that, and we looked at educational attainment levels, that part of Virginia, which we're part of, would be the second-highest state in the country in attainment levels. Then separate the rest of Virginia, which is the rural southern, southwest part of Virginia, and you look at educational attainment levels, it would be fiftieth in the nation. So, we have a polarized condition within our state of educational attainment levels, which, if I were governor, it would concern me a lot. It concerns me enough now as college president with a community college, that we need to try to educate and prepare as many people as we can for not only their future, but the future of our region. So the one-two-seven problem. What this means is, for every high-level degree, an engineer, an attorney, it takes two people with a bachelor's degree to support that one position with the higher degree. And then, it takes seven other people, which is what our market niche is, to train people with an associate degree, or a certificate, or some kind of a workforce credential. It takes seven people we train to support those two bachelor's degree and that one higher degree. So when I talk about workforce credentials, and I'll give you a specific example with our Goochlin campus, there's something called I-CAR, aluminum welding. It's a great example because some of you have either ridden in, or maybe owned a Corvette at some point in your life, or certainly you know what they are. Well, a decade ago, Corvettes were made with steel frames. And then General Motors, because of the pressure at the federal level to increase gas mileage, they've gone to fiberglass, and the frames are now aluminum. So GM Corporate mandated to all the dealerships, if you want to continue to sell Corvettes, you now have to have a certified aluminum welder on your staff, because obviously, we can't sell Corvettes with aluminum frames. Someone crashes it, and then we can't fix it and repair it for them. So that's just one example. But it's a credential. It's not a college degree, but it's specific to a particular trade or skill area. In fact, a lot of people don't know that a highly, a highly-paid plumber makes a lot more than a lowly-paid attorney. And people just often don't know those facts.
Very green.
I said lowly-paid attorney. So, anyway, so our chancellor has adopted, he just literally started this month, our state board approved, the next six-year strategic goal and vision. There's only one goal, which is unusual for a strategic plan, but the chancellor's goal for the whole state is to triple the number of credentials, these are workforce credentials, triple the number of workforce credentials awarded in the Commonwealth. So, moving to our regional perspective, there are thirty-six thousand job seekers and fifty-two thousand job openings. And this comes up every now and then with groups that I'm involved with, where we're trying to address regional issues. And one would think, well, gee, it sounds pretty simple. If you have thirty-six thousand job seekers and fifty-two thousand jobs, why don't you find a, connect those folks and let them go to work? But it's not quite that simple. The thirty-six thousand people who would like to go to work don't necessarily have the skills that are needed for those fifty-two thousand jobs. And there's even a percent in the mix somewhere of some folks who may not want to go to work. But our role is to try to identify, what are the job skills? Who has the potential to learn those skills? And then, if we can train them so that they can go to work, that's the, that's the biggest issue that employers have right now, is just not a, not enough workers at the skill levels that they need. In fact, someone from Capital One told me three or four years ago that Capital One might not be able to grow in our region because they couldn't find enough skilled workers in the financial area, which is what they, you know, their expertise is in. So, what's the root cause of the problem? It is essentially what I just described, which is the skill sets don't match the job needs that we have. So we just completed, when I say we, it was a combined study that John Tyler and J. Sergeant Reynolds, and then SHRM, which is the Human Resources Organization, we just completed a study to really get a sense of our region, and this was just our region, it wasn't the whole state, but fifty-seven percent say finding and hiring qualified workers is a challenge, and fifty-five percent say job seekers lack the technical skills for available jobs. So again, if there were a number-one issue within the business community, it would be the shortage of skilled workers. We do have a joint workforce training program called the Community College Workforce Alliance. When I came here thirteen years ago, at the time, we didn't partner with John Tyler. We had our own workforce operations, and they, I guess they overlapped and they competed, which didn't really make sense to me, because a lot of our businesses have multiple locations. Just because a county line is here or there, they didn't think that way and work that way. So we merged our workforce training, so now we have a large regional training workforce, which has been really, really quite successful. In fact, we trained over eleven thousand employees this last year, and about eleven, about eleven hundred employers who worked with us. So Powhatan County's perspective for this past year. I'd like to thank Ann Moore for continuing service on the board. She's been a real delight, and in a few minutes, she'll share her thoughts with you about the college and what being on the board is like. So thank you for having appointed her. We had a hundred and ninety-three Powhatan County residents attend Reynolds. Now, I will have for you next year, I think I can get them, the numbers of Powhatan residents who also go to John Tyler, because John Tyler's Midlothian campus is right down the road. They're, Powhatan's not technically their service area, so in a way, I would, I like to think of it as Powhatan really gets a great value for the money that you do share with us, because I think you have at least twice as many students who go to the Midlothian campus. And if you want automotive, and you're anywhere between here and Tidewater, you have to come to J. Sergeant Reynolds. If you want to be a mortician, we don't have that program. You can go to John Tyler. So there are some areas where programs are specific. There's enough of a need for nurses that we both have programs, like nursing programs. We also, twelve are recent high school graduates of Powhatan High School, as it says. We had eight Powhatan residents graduate this last May with degrees or certificates. And then we do partner a lot with Powhatan County Public Schools. In fact, we are starting something, we actually started it this last academic year, called the Advanced College Academy. So this first year, which we just completed, now these will be sophomores starting this fall. They will stay together as sophomores, and then they'll stay together as juniors and seniors. But their junior year, they will start taking Reynolds Community College classes at the high school. And the instructor, of course, meets, whether it's a Powhatan school individual who's teaching our class, they meet the college hiring qualifications. The neat thing about this is the students will graduate in four years, just like their friends will, but they will actually graduate with a two-year associate degree while they also graduate from high school. Technically, they'll graduate a couple of weeks before with the college degree, because our graduation is in May, and the high school's graduation is in June. So I once had a, when we first started this program, the first program was in, was in Henrico schools, and I hadn't, a student asked me one day if, well, won't I be cheated out of, like, two years of college, you know, if I do this? And my response was, no, you won't at all. You can still go to college for four years, but you'll be able to complete your master's degree, and still go to the football games and the sorority and all that fun stuff that they have. So we also will offer dual enrollment classes. Dual enrollment class means that it's a college class offered at the high school, that is a course that will transfer to college. It's not a full-degree program. There are classes students can take. But we will offer classes at Powhatan High School this year in biology, precalculus, psychology, sociology, and culinary arts. And so students take those, and then they often kind of get a head start on what going to the university is like, because these courses will then, culinary arts probably won't, but the others will transfer to whatever university they end up going to. We also invested in a career coach at Powhatan High School. A career coach is, think of it as sort of a career advisor. It's not like a typical high school counselor, but it's someone who can help students understand their many options. Which one is going to UVA, or Tech, or VCU? Another one, though, is getting into a technical career path and still developing a great career. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the typical caseload in our region for high school counselors is between six and seven hundred students, or six and, yeah, six and hundred, seven hundred students to one counselor. And think about, if you were the counselor and you had a caseload of six or seven hundred students, I mean, I, I can't, I can only imagine what that's like, but it seems to me it's almost overwhelming. So we've added the career coach, so that the students who have options and want to explore other things, at least it helps some. And then we have the Transportation Academy. It's an automotive technology dual enrollment program, which is open to Powhatan High School students, that is at our Goochlin campus. So some students go back and forth, only because the automotive shops, you can imagine, that's not something you can duplicate. It's just very expensive to duplicate that in, in multiple locations. So our foundation has also provided twenty thousand dollars in scholarships to Powhatan residents, Powhatan residents in the last two years. And ultimately, our, you know, when I get up in the morning, it's all about, my world is anyway, about making our communities better, and we, you know, I think about doing that one student at a time. It's impressive when I go to graduation at the Segal Center, and we see the families and the students. And of course, like, probably, I would say, almost everybody in this room, none of us have been successful by ourselves. You know, we've had family, spouses, children, parents, friends who've helped us along the way. So from the first day of orientation until the last day when the students graduate, you know, we really are making a difference. And I'd like to thank you for the support that you've given us over the last few years. And I'm in my thirteenth year now here as president, and so I think we have a really, really great region and a great county. And I just want to say thanks. And I'd like to ask Mrs. Moore if she'd come up and share any thoughts she has with all of you. And then we'll see if you have any questions.
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Board of Supervisors, for appointing me to the Reynolds College Board. This has been an extremely exciting year. I have just finished my first year, and I have had the most amazing experience being on this board with Dr. Rhodes and his incredibly talented, professional, and just extremely, extremely capable staff. I think the partnership is wonderful. I think if you read over all of the statistics that Dr. Rhodes gave you, you will see that Powhatan is definitely benefiting from the partnership with Reynolds College. The dual enrollment is, the dual certificate is just absolutely fabulous for these students to be able to start in their freshman year and move through and get a degree, an associate degree, with their high school diploma. And to think that you could leave high school with a two-year associate degree, and then to further your education, to be able to go and, and like Dr. Rhodes said, to have a master's in the four, in the four years, is amazing. I think the students are very, very fortunate. I think Powhatan County is very fortunate to have the partnership with Reynolds. I am enjoying being on the board, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be a part of the J. Sergeant Reynolds College Board. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you, Dr. Rhodes. He's an amazing man.
Thank you. So are there any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Mr. Tucker. I have a couple comments.
Dr. Rhodes, thank you for coming, as usual, and keeping us informed about what you do with us and for us. Mr. Williams and I sit on the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, and we hear on a regular basis that education and workforce development are competitive engines for economic development in the region. The perception is a huge body of young adults being left behind by not being exposed to and trained up in what is going to be the jobs of the future. It may very well be training them to do what needs to be done now, but the question becomes, what are we doing as a society? And my question to you is specifically, what is a think tank at J. Sarge doing to try to identify what is those, what are those skills that the jobs of tomorrow are going to demand, that we may not even be aware of, or just basically aware of at this point? What do you, what do you do in the community college system to try to get your hands wrapped around that, so you can prepare classes to help prepare the workforce of the future?
So we will hear things from time to time, which, it's, it's a little bit of a frightening thought, but I'll hear something like, the college is preparing people for jobs that don't exist yet. And I, and I hear that, and I think, so, what does that mean? What it does mean is, I have an Apple Watch, and, you know, it's basically an extension of my iPhone. I can take calls on the Apple Watch. I can do anything that my iPhone basically does. So twenty years from now, what kinds of technologies are we going to experience that we haven't even thought about yet? Supervisor Tucker, my response to that would be, we need to go back and teach, first of all, the soft skills, the basics, the critical thinking skills, the textbook learning that comes with that. I will tell you that of my eighteen thousand students a year, students first test when they come to us, to see what level of math and reading they should start at. And they're all high school graduates, but I will have over four thousand a year who test, and they're not college-ready. Eighty percent of those are deficient in math. So I would suggest that if we teach students how to read and write and communicate, and how, and give them a good, a sense of a good work ethic, it was probably easier generations ago, when you grew up on the farm and the family was together, and a lot of the values were taught. But I, I personally think that we have to emphasize very heavily the values, as well as the typical classroom learning things. And then the students will be able to adapt and adjust to whatever new things come our way. We also have to get past the mindset that if a student doesn't go to UVA or William &amp; Mary, not everybody's going to become a doctor and a lawyer. We just, that the world isn't working like that. So I don't know if, our chancellor talks about, he had to have an electrical line run on, on his boat dock when he moved to the river, and it was two thousand dollars for, you know, part of a day's work. And that's, that's a pretty good rate, you know, for an electrician to make. So I, I think that the thing that will continue is communication skills. We know that's going to continue. That's been around forever. There will be new techniques. Joe is my eyes and ears to the millennial generation, so when I get stuck on something that's technology-related, I say, "Help, Joe!" And he can, he can just show me how it works. So we just have to stay attuned, and like, like we should also be, continue to be lifelong learners along the way. But I'm, I'm banking on the core values. It's a challenge when we have so many single-parent families now. You don't get the, the role modeling that we used to see years ago. But I think that's what we have to focus on, is the basics.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Dr. Rhodes, first of all, thank you for coming out tonight. And Ms. Moore, thank you for serving. Hopefully you get as much as, I hope you get much out of it as you put into it, because I'm sure you do a lot of work and hard work. Dr. Rhodes, I, you know, I sit on the Capital Area Workforce Alliance. I've attended your chancellor's meeting. Also sit on the RRPDC, and just recently saw a presentation. And a lot of dialogue going on, on how to meet the needs of the future. And I think you touched on one thing. It was said in the, in the chancellor's town hall meeting that Mr. Altman and I attended. And that was a cultural change that seems to take place. And many of us, the first thing we ask a high school graduate was where you were going into college. Today, it should be, what's your next steps, and where, where you, what are you thinking about? And so the cultural change is taking place. We just need to facilitate it and continue. I don't disagree that soft skills is something that has been talked about a lot. We talk about it at the Capital Area Workforce Alliance. Mrs. Pemberton, sitting back there, kind of hiding, has recently reached out to your, your people on workforce to help work a program here in the county, to, to do a better job of meeting our workforce needs. So I think we're beginning the process, but, and I hopefully, I see the community college kind of leading all of that. And I know that you've been challenged to do so, and hopefully those, those findings y'all are going to be, we can implement and not duplicate services, but enhance services for everyone. So thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hillary?
Yes.
I have a comment I'd like to make. Gary, you made the statement that not everybody's cut out to be a doctor or a lawyer. And you made the statement also that plumbers probably make more than some lawyers today. I know two guys up here on the stage that would like to know whether you offer training in plumbing, and that being two lawyers. I saw their interest peak as soon as you said that.
We would have to give them the entrance assessment for English and math first, but I could...
Then I'll tell them not to apply. I also, you know, remember not too long ago in the news where the governor was mandating you guys, the community college presidents, to get out there and start identifying, you know, what were the training needs and your particular localities. And I had to smile because Ann's kept me informed about just how many training programs y'all do have in place, and that you're constantly doing that every day out there in the community, trying to figure out, what is it that you need to be providing to employers such that you can have the people that we've talked about that they need? One of the things I know has been talked about down at the CRC was the fact that we're losing people that are going to Northern Virginia.
Charlotte.
Yeah.
Denver, because of the bicycle paths they have there and things.
Yeah.
Right.
The other thing is, as you know, at the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, we're moving forward with indicators for the region, so that we can measure and compare ourselves with other similarly situated regions around the country. And two of the things that stand out is, one is high school graduation rates. We're at the bottom. We're ranked last with, you know, the people that we typically compare ourselves with. And the other indicator is poverty. We're going to be moving forward with the indicators this next year and the years going forward, and trying to put action in place to be able to change the dial, to be able to change those rates. Do you have any recommendations for us as to how we, as a region, given your experience, address those two issues?
Well, our region is very diverse. And as you might guess, if you look at the different, the five counties and the city that we serve, the city's most challenged, and it's, it's, it has the lowest graduation rate. And Henrico and Hanover are usually near the top, and then we have Goochlin and Powhatan somewhere near the top. So what, you know, the, the old notion of one child left behind, which was really a federal mandate, the idea is that we need to be sure that all of our students have a minimum threshold of performance in reading and writing and math. And I don't think we should be letting students graduate if they can't perform at a certain level. The previous governor, Bob McDonald, he did, he eliminated some of the high school diploma types. There were a couple that were eliminated because they really weren't that meaningful. So I think it's all about our teachers. And it's, it's two parts, though. It's the teachers and the school system. We have to value our teachers, and teachers are getting a pay raise, as you probably have heard, it was in today's paper, for the first time in several years. And then also, whatever we can do to help manage influence at the home front, I know that's tough for us to do, for, tough for you to do as, as a community leader. It's tough for me to do as college president, because I can't dictate what happens in a home. But having, whether it's uncles, or friends, or others, as role models, even the Boys and Girls Clubs, kinds of organizations. So I think we have to provide the environment where students can learn. We need to give them the resources. And if we aim high and we fall short, we're going to make a lot of great progress. If we aim low and we fall short, we're going to be in terrible positions. So I don't have a magic wand either. I get excited about the students that we do serve, and not every student, even at our college, is successful. I will tell you that of the general population of students who go to VCU, right, as freshmen out of high school, somewhere around fifty percent graduate in six years. If a student comes to Reynolds and takes thirty credits or more and transfers, seventy percent graduate in the same six-year window. But let me say, it's not because we do something better than VCU. They're getting students right out of high school who aren't college-ready also. That's why the number's lower. But if a student... But if a student comes to us and completes the courses that are designed for transfer, then they have a pretty good shot at completing those. So, it's a never-ending progress, it's, it's a process, you know? It's not a, it's not something that we can measure in ounces and fix it, and then it's fixed. It's not like a leak in a pipe that you can fix it. So, we're making progress. I think you are right, the community college system and the Commonwealth is at the front of the stage to help make the greatest impact, and so, that's, that's what I find exciting about my job, and I find it a little scary at times, both.
Well, thank you for what you do. You're doing a outstanding job for us here in the, in the region. And Ann, thank you for your service, and we look forward to all the good things that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rhodes.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nordvig, go ahead.
I'd be remiss, Dr. Rhodes, if I didn't say, both of my sons, now 20 and 18, have participated in both Reynolds and Tyler, depending on the courses they needed. My 20-year-old did two years, got his associate's degree, like you were talking about. He just finished his first year at VMI. He was taking junior-level courses, and he got a 4.0 for the year. So, I want to personally thank you. In case you're wondering, and you too, Morse, thank you very much. In case you're wondering, folks, this works, okay? And it also saved me a ton of money. Did you hear that? A ton of money. So, seriously, thank you very much for what you've done.
They had good DNA, too, I suspect, didn't they?
No, it's what my father calls the generation skipping gene in the family. Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Got it from his wife.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rhodes. At this time, we'll have our first public comment period. We invite the public, members of the public, to share their thoughts on matters and issues that are germane to county business. This is not a forum for criticism of specific individuals or attacks on any person or group. It is also not the forum for political campaigning or promoting a business. Please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter over which this board has responsibility. Please keep your comments to three minutes if you're an individual, five minutes if you're a group. Please state your name and address if you come to the mic to speak. Perfect. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. We'll move, item eight, consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Some move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Second. All in favor of the consent?
I have to do a roll call.
You're right.
Because of the resolutions on it, I'm sorry.
Okay. We have a first and a, we have a...
A motion and a second.
Motion and a second. A second by Mr. Tucker?
Yes. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig.
Aye.
Mr. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Melton.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to item number nine, appointments to boards and commissions. First one is 9A, found on page 75, Community Action Agency.
Interesting, your district, Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request the appointment of Sandra Spees to the Community Action Board, a Community Action Agency.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we need to do roll call on these? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We'll now move on to item 9B, page 82, Library Board. We have two appointments on this. I'll be glad to make the motion if, Jerry Venable is one that has been recommended, and then also Susan Ash. I'll make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 9C, Social Service Board, page 87. I think we have two individuals on this also. If I'm correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion for the Social Services Board from District 2, Karen Yulamaki, and the other one is from another district, I believe.
Yes, I will make that motion, but I'll let Mr. Nordvig go first. I think we got two slots, if I'm right.
Right.
Second, Mr. Nordvig's motion.
All in favor, Mrs. Yulamaki, to the Social Service Board?
Aye.
Aye. Most, those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, I also make a motion for my district is Henry Burline. I would move, I spoke with him today, and I believe he's here this evening as well, and just got a chance to talk with him, and I think he's more than qualified. Talked to Mr. Tucker about the services he's already performed, just getting ready for that, so I'd move that his admission be admitted to the Social Service Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you for agreeing to serve. We're on to item number, let's see. 10A, Public Hearings. Thank goodness. We now have a public hearing on ordinance 2015-14 amending Powhatan County Code, ordinance to amend Chapter 30, Article 3, courtance and maintenance assessment. Who's taking this?
This is my item.
Okay.
Earlier this year, the Circuit Court Clerk requested that the board, and the board approved that the county submit an application to the Department of General Services, DG, DGS, to evaluate our courthouse, to see if it's in compliance with current safety and security guidelines. We did have that assessment done, and they have come back with a recommendation for changes. With that, with the county is now allowed to have what is called a courthouse maintenance fee. I believe I've stated that correctly. So, we have an ordinance in front of, we're asking you to have a hold of public hearing on the ordinance, and then an ordinance that we would ask you to take action on that would add the fee to the county code and also amend the fee schedule, which is also in the county code, to include this, they call it courthouse renovation assessment for $3. Stand ready to answer any questions you may have of staff.
Any questions of staff? We had talked about this in a workshop.
Yes, you did.
At this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2015-14 amending Powhatan County Code of the ordinance to amend Chapter 30, also Article 3, maintenance assessment, Section 30-62, and to amend the appendix A fee schedule to provide for the imposition of courthouse renovation assessment fee. Those wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve 0215-14 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have to take a roll.
That's right.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to item 10B. This is a public hearing on ordinance 2015 granting W. Michael Potter a conditional rezoning of 13 acres from commercial district and agricultural A-10 to village center planned development with proffered conditions. Mr. Altman, I think you're going to take this?
Yes, sir. Give it a second, okay? Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we have a request before you to, for a public hearing to consider requests submitted by Mr. Potter to conditionally rezone 13 acres of land from commercial and agricultural A-10 to the Village Center Planned Development District with proffered conditions. Purpose of the request is to create a single-family residential subdivision, okay, with maximum of 40 units, 10 single-family with attached garage, 23 single-family with detached garage, and seven single-family townhouse units. The proposed rezoning contains two, quote, "out parcels," which are, consists of the existing Aaron Hill, which was the bed and breakfast, and Mabel's, and also are included in the rezoning for consistency in the zoning of the area with the comprehensive plan. Aaron Hill will be converted to a single-family dwelling, and Mabel's will continue to operate as a restaurant. The ma, the minimum density in the village, right, village plan district is for four dwelling units per acre with a maximum of eight. The proposed Aaron Hill development has a density of 4.43 dwellings per acre. This is the subject property. The current zoning surrounding the property is A-10, the one piece in the middle, that's A-10, and then the courthouse district. Just views of the property. The planning commission conducted their public hearing at their May 5 meeting. During that meeting, they deferred to action, having some questions for both staff and the applicant to resolve. We picked the public, we picked the meeting up back on their June meeting. At that meeting, the planning commission discussed the issues with staff and the applicant. Upon close of the discussion, the planning commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval of the request to rezon with the proper conditions to the board. Those proper conditions can be found on page 122, I believe, of your, 122 of your packet. They include Yates Lane improvements adjacent to the development, VDOT standard roads within the development, sidewalks along the roadways. The applicant has proffered the conceptual development plan as it, the textual statement that's in your package, lights, the applicant has proffered lights, pedestrian lights along the sidewalk from Yates Lane to the roundabout on 13, proffered a maximum of 40 new residential units, the conceptual building plan elevations that were submitted as part of your packet, and then the setbacks for the project, which would be 10-foot front yard, 10-foot rear yard, 1-foot side yard with 10-foot minimum between the dwelling units or houses, excluding common walls on the townhouses, a 3-foot rear yard accessory dwelling setback, and a cash proffer to cover the public safety, library, parks, and recreation, and public works portion of our proffers. The request is consistent with several of the goals and objectives that are in our comprehensive use, land use plan, related to the how, land use, housing, and then also with regard to, in the, specifically, the courthouse village area. The one comment that we had regarding the public service analysis would be a recommendation to move the 25 mile an hour speed limit sign from down by Yates, Yates Lane or Mabel's up closer to the roundabout to address some traffic issue there. Staff stands ready to answer any questions. The applicant is here this evening, if you have any questions for him.
Can we move the VDOT sign? Or does VDOT have to move it? I know they're pretty anal about dropping the speed limits and all those things over the years. I've tried to get some speed studies done and...
VDOT, VDOT would move the sign, but it was their recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
That Chris Carter.
Wow, that's amazing. I'm sorry, they just have, over the years, been very hesitant to allow any speed to be reduced anywhere, so. Any other questions of staff at this time?
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Weeb.
I may have missed it. March, did you talk about the cash proffer?
Well, yeah, and the applicant has agreed to pay for the proffer for the public safety, recreation, util, public works and library portion. As you know, we've been discussing the proffer calculation here within the last few weeks. We don't have that specific calculation for what the new proffer amount would be, but I believe the applicant has agreed, and correct me if I'm wrong, that he would be willing to go up to $2,200.
It was 17 something is what I initially...
Right. Hold on, excuse me, sir. If he's going to address, please have him come to the mic and state your name, please.
Sure. Good evening, I'm Michael Potter, 3875 Old Buckham Road. To answer the question, what my initial cash proffer was 1,738, but with my simple mind, I'd be happy to commit to the $2,000. I think it'd be the easiest thing to, to state, and then if, make those adjustments if, if your proffer comes south of that. That's, sounds reasonable.
Let me, let me ask March your question.
Sure.
On my, Mr. Potter. March, in looking at your proffer calculations today, do you feel like $2,000 would be sufficient to cover those areas, realizing that the proffer amount that Mr. Potter has offered for, for the library really is not required today?
Right.
Given, you know, our FY16 capital improvement plan?
I think, looking at what we have in, in some initial, looking at the calculation, I would be comfortable with the, the amount that Mr. Potter is offering, knowing that there's a plus or minus swag, and that's just somewhat of the risk of the voluntary, the proffer is voluntary, but I think what he's offering, staff would be comfortable with.
Any other questions of staff? Go ahead.
So, upon build-out, what's the total population we're adding?
Upon build-out, we're looking at, we, an average of three people per household, so we'd have 120 new residents potentially in the village if we follow that pattern. We looked at that from a student standpoint. It would generate, assuming that in the majority of the county develops in two fam, two-headed households, so that 3.2 would be really 1.02 children. Looking at that, with the, the development may generate approximately 41 new students, and then we have a breakdown of that in the staff report, looking at the total capacity study that was done as portion of the school's facility plan. The school should, schools should be able to absorb all of those students without any need for increased capacity at any level of their system.
So, so I think, Mr. Tucker, I guess your question was, if it's 3.2, 40 units would be 123 or so.
Max, sort of max.
Roughly.
Well, some of them are going to be two people, or even maybe one.
Exactly.
Depending upon...
And I would state that the, this will be one of our first residential subdivisions that would be connected to water and sewer.
Would this, any other questions of staff? I don't have any at this time.
I do, sir. Do you know, and this is, Michael, this is for you or March, but I don't know who's better, better to answer this one. What's the approximate setback, if you will, from the sidewalk to the two homes, two or three homes that are on that first cul-de-sac to the left when you go in? Like, going from the street toward the Aaron Hill building? About how much room are we talking about? So, if I'm walking past on the sidewalk, trying to get an idea of what...
Yeah. 50 feet? Yeah, I would say at least. Well, it's in, I mean, it's almost in, in Miss, it's almost, if you get a strict line of sight, it's almost to the rear portion of where Mabel's has the addition to it. If you notice that on the written, so, and that building is probably, what, 30 feet deep, and then you probably got 30 to 40 feet there, you're probably in excess of 100, 150 feet.
And just for clarification, Michael, is there any planned buffer going in along that sidewalk at all, or is that up to the resident?
Those homes will be facing, those are actually facing the, the highway, so, but that will stay in HOA, that, that piece of land, along with those street lights.
Right, okay.
Inclusive in there. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
You're certainly welcome.
Any other questions of staff at this time? We have a public hearing. Mr. Potter, usually we allow the applicant to say something, so I know we've asked her some questions, is there anything else you would like to add? It's not necessary.
It's, it's wonderful that we have the support of, of the village, and, and some of those persons are here tonight, including Clara Stokes, who's the, the new resident at Aaron Hill. She and her family, so, things are moving forward, and there's a lot of excitement in the air. We're excited as well, and hope you are. But thank y'all for your time and energy that you've put into this, and everyone gave, certainly was receptive to my phone call and, and time we spent together, so I thank y'all all for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. At this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2015-15 granting WM, W. Michael Potter a conditional rezoning of 13 acres. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This is my district, and I have a couple of comments. It is refreshing to me to see the adaptive reuse of this piece of property. It meets the comprehensive plan. It's exactly what we envisioned for the village. To Mr. Williams's point earlier in the dialogue months ago, it's using a private water system, which doesn't cost this county anything. As Michael said, that, they entered a Wall Street, not to, to the county. Mr. Potter's going to be using our, our public sewer system, which we're supplementing at a large chunk, which this is not going to fix it, but it sure will help. And I think if I'm, if I'm misstating, I apologize, but I think Mr. Potter may be the largest single user of our, multiple user of our, of our public sewer system at this time, and I ain't look for...
He didn't mean it.
Could be taken as a compliment, could be taken the other way. Depends how the paper wants to write that one, so. Thank you, thank you. But I do appreciate that. I, I look forward to this, coming to the village.[1735.75] I look forward to this coming to the village. I do applaud you for, Mr. Potter, for putting the lights along the sidewalk, running to the county administration building, because I walk quite frequently and it is a dark section there. And I even asked Pat to see if we could find some type of funding to get it done, but now we, Pat, we can stop that one, work on something else. But, Michael, thank you for doing that, and I look forward to the project coming before us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
This is one of the most exciting possibilities that I've witnessed, I thought the possibilities of the revitalization of the courthouse. We've all talked over the years about our intent and our dreams for the courthouse, to keep it a vibrant center for this community. And I think the nature of Mr. Potter's plans, and all of us know the quality of Mr. Potter's work and his civic and community responsibilities and commitments, this is, this is grand. This is exactly the kind of things I'm hoping for more of. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? If not, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just for the record, Mr. Altman has had Mr. Potter fill in the amount he voluntarily proffered, the $2,000, and actually put his signature beside it. So I wanted that to be reflected in the record that he has.
Thank you, Mr. Latchney, for bringing that to our attention. So now I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance two thousand fifteen, fifteen, granting W. Michael Potter a conditional rezoning of thirteen acres.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Hold on, I apologize, Pat's got a poll.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Michael. At this time, we'll move on to public hearing ordinance two thousand fifteen, sixteen, to conditionally rezone approximately three point six acres of land located at forty-three forty-five and forty-three fifty-nine Anderson Highway from residential commercial to light industrial with proffered conditions. So, Mr. Altman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, Mr. Ronald H. Oliver, Jr., has requested the conditional rezoning of three point six acres, plus or minus, from residential commercial RC to light industrial I-1 with proper conditions. The purpose of the request is allow for the expansion of one of the existing buildings to provide for additional manufacturing and, let me get us there, here we go, to allow for additional manufacturing and packaging of parts and warehouse space for internal storage of materials. Expansion would allow for the applicant to meet demands of the companies that are their clients. The expansion is, and would be from the building at the back that isn't highlighted, it would move forward towards Route sixty. The subject properties currently contain a machine and fabrication shop, warehousing, a single-family dwelling, and it's used as a rental and some vacant land. The planning commission conducted their public hearing on this item at their June second meeting to allow the community to provide an opportunity to comment. No citizen spoke during the public hearing. The commission discussed the request and voted five oh to recommend approval of a rezoning request with the proffered condition. That proffered condition is that the applicant is willing to provide right-of-way along Route sixty for a future ultimate right-of-way of sixty foot from center at the time that the, at no cost to the county, at the time that the right-of-way is needed for improvements. The subject request meets several of our comprehensive land use plan vision goals and objectives, particularly under the economic development and transportation areas, and also in the rural preservation land use policies. It discusses the desire to expand our rural industrial and commercial operations that are throughout the county, and this certainly is one of those. If staff has, if staff has any questions, it's been a long night. If the board has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I believe the applicant is here in the representative here this evening. If you have any questions for them.
Does anybody have questions of staff at this time? I have none. Mr. Oliver, would you guys like to make any statement? You don't have to. Thank you. We'll open, at this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance two thousand fifteen, sixteen, to conditionally rezone approximately three point six acres of land located forty-three forty-five and forty-three fifty-nine Anderson Highway. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, public hearing on this matter, and this is in my district. First, before I make a motion, Mr. Oliver, Ms. Oliver, thank you for your investment in the county. I said on the planning commission, when you came before, once before, about expansion, it seemed to kind of come to a screeching halt. I came up, when this first came before the planning commission, I saw your wonderful operation, your investment in machinery, your people, your willingness to provide services to your customers was impeccable. The place was very well-run in my eyes, and I'm really excited that you're going to finally get a chance to expand, buy that equipment you talked about, provide those additional jobs, and create that tax base that we so, so, so need. So with that said, I'm going to move that we approve...
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Ms. Oliver a quick question?
Yes, yes, Mr. Williams.
I seem to remember when I went by there, it's been a while ago, and by the way, you do have a no-standing business.
He just wants one of your tree stands, and please, if you're going to answer these...
Yes. He's right. I was going to ask you about those, but I'll get with you later.
Were you really?
Yes. He knows me.
Guess what? I probably want one myself.
But they look good.
I'm sorry, David, I didn't mean to steal your thunder there. So I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance two thousand fifteen, sixteen, as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, excuse me, I apologize, Pat.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Hello, they probably don't want you in a missile silo anywhere, do they? Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Oliver, good luck to you. Thank you. We now have a public hearing ordinance two thousand fifteen, seventeen, adopting the chief local elected official's agreement for the Capital Region Workforce Partnership, authorizing Chairman of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors to execute this agreement. This is basically something we did in workshop last meeting, and we do need to have a public hearing on it. I think you're going to go over this basically?
Yes, it's very, we have not a lot to present on this. This is, as you stated, authorizing the Chairman of the Board to sign this agreement, which is an agreement between the localities that make up the Capital Region Workforce Partnership. It was required to be an ordinance, and therefore it was advertised in the newspaper on July first and July eighth. Mr. Staff stands ready to answer any questions.
This basically just says that we are still going to participate in the local workforce program, so. Any questions of staff? At this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance two thousand fifteen, seventeen, adopting the chief local elected official agreement for the Capital Region Workforce Partnership. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I...
Chairman, move that we approve O. two thousand fifteen dash seventeen. Second.
Motion, we have a motion, a second.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Motion passes five zero. We'll now move on to eleven A, action items. Resolution R. two thousand fifteen fifty-eight, adopting the Powhatan County Revenue Sharing Program Policy, found on page one eighty-one. We had this in our workshop last month.
This item was discussed on November third, and it was also then discussed on June fifteenth. Mr. Altman wasn't standing up, so I started speaking for him, but now he's coming to the dais, so we'll allow him to speak on this.
So in full disclosure, what we presented at October, the fifteenth meeting, there happened some minor changes. I let VDOT take a look at it. They did just very really non-substantive issues, with the exception of one item. Under B on page fifty-three, one eighty-three, under the project initiation, they were kind enough to point out that we wanted to eliminate the portion of that under right-of-way availability that said the right-of-way had to be acquired before, because that would mean that we wouldn't be able to use the revenue sharing money to reimburse ourselves. So we took that out. That was the one big substantive change that we had. The rest is very minor, but I did want to let you know there were some small changes to it as a result of letting VDOT take a look at it. But other than that, it is in the exact same form that you saw it at your last meeting. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of staff? Thank goodness it's here, let's use it, let's go. Can I get a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Do we need to...
I have to take it. And Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Now on to eleven C, resolution two thousand fifteen seventy-one, amending the Powhatan County Employee Handbook dated July fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, found on page one eighty-seven.
This agenda statement does say that the proposed changes will be distributed at the meeting. The proposed changes were emailed to the Board of Supervisors on Friday, and in addition to that, they were emailed on Sunday to all of the department directors. You have discussed this item on June third and June eighth for the amendment that you made on June fifteenth, but at that time, we knew that we would need to be making some changes for MOUs with certain constitutional officers, specifically with the sheriffs. There's four changes that are being proposed for public safety, which affects the sheriff's office and the fire and rescue department, and it has to do with issues that deal with the fact that they, the sheriff's office is law enforcement, and all of those offices are open twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and also the federal FLSA law is different for public safety than it is for regular government employees or other employees. We have sixteen small changes, just to clarify law, excuse me, clarify language, correct inconsistencies, or to comply with law. And then there are twenty-four sections where we're substituting the word county administrator or department director with the word agency head, and we've defined the word agency head to be the director of the library, the director of social services, the county administrator, or any constitutional officer. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have on this resolution or on the handbook.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R. two thousand fifteen dash seventy-one. Second.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Moving eleven D, action item, Resolution two thousand fifteen fifty-seven, implementing the two thousand fifteen Employee Classification and Compensation Plan, found on page one eighty-nine of our packet.
This has a long history of the dates that previously was considered by the Board, but the last action you took was on June fifteenth where you adopted the plan, and so now we're bringing back to you a resolution where you will implement the plan. As we've always stated, the first step to implement the plan will be to compensate employees so that they make at least the minimum of their grade on the new compensation scale. In the agenda statement, it says that that affects thirty-three employees, but we have employees that changed jobs or have left us, and it does, excuse me, the first step does affect thirty-two employees, not thirty-three, and the cost is $65,000, not the $64,050 that is in your, in your agenda statement. So I am reading off an attachment to this resolution that was handed out to the Board this evening, and we also had copies for the audience of the same attachment, so. Step one, as I said, brings employees to the minimum. Step two would take employees to the midpoint or the maximum of the grade based on the number of years in the position, and the years range from one year to twenty years. At twenty, at ten years, would bring the employee to midpoint, and at twenty years, it would bring the employee to maximum. There's not enough funding in the FY16 budget to fully fund step two, so we're doing it in phases. It would take three phases, and pending funding, there is no guarantee that we would ever do phase two or phase three. It's pending funding, but there would be those phase two and phase three implementation for step two if there's funding available in the seventeen and eighteen budget. Step three is to give a one-half percent increase to employees who have at least one year of service, if they're not already in step one or step two. This is to help in employees who are seeing additional costs in health insurance. The county passed on health insurance increases to the employees. A total of a hundred and sixty-four employees are impacted, and the total package is $249,000, which was as budgeted in the budget. I stand ready to answer any questions the Board may have on the implementation plan.
Any questions of staff? One question, so Pat, on the page one eighty-nine, that we need to change sixty-four thousand zero fifty to sixty-five thousand?
Correct. You won't need to change it on the agenda, the agenda item is just a summary, and if you look on the resolution that you're adopting, the resolution does not mention any dollar amounts. It says that you're doing it per the attached schedule, which is the attachment that I've handed out where it does say the sixty-five thousand.
Gotcha, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I also make one other recommendation on the now resolved clause? As a housecleaning matter, may I recommend that we amend that to say now, therefore, be it resolved by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, that the county administrators authorized to adjust the salary wages of all legally affected county employees listed on the attached schedule. Said adjustments shall become effective as of July one, two thousand fifteen. It addresses some housekeeping, some...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R. two thousand fifteen dash fifty-seven with Mr. Latchney's proposed changes. Second.
Move a motion in a second?
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye. Motion passes five zero on the item twelve A. It's a discussion item only, Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-four, adopting the Powhatan County Local EMS Response Plan. I think Chief Singer's going to take this, found on page two twelve of your packet.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Bringing this forward, back in October of two thousand twelve, the Commonwealth of Virginia Office of EMS established that each jurisdiction needed to have its own EMS plan. In other words, conglomeration between the responders and the county administrators and officials that clearly adopted what type of service levels you're looking for. I've been working over the past six months with Dr. LaPettina and Alan Beach of the Rescue Squad, and talked several times with Board members about this. So we've come forth with a resolution that needs to be officially adopted, obviously, to set our response standards. So we're setting standards across the board on several different areas. The first one is processing of our nine-one-one calls. Processing nine-one-one calls, we'd like to have completed within ninety seconds, eighty percent of the time. The next level would be our first responders, that's our fire department vehicles who respond first response to EMS calls, and we propose that there be a ten-minute and thirty-second standard to be utilized for response, first response vehicles as a basic life support provider. And then the main one that the state is looking for proposes a fourteen-minute and thirty-second standard for the arrival of a transport unit to all advanced life support and all priority basic life support emergencies, and a twenty-minute standard utilizing non-priority basic life support standards. So basically, this is just a, these are standards that, you know, they're goals to shoot for. It gives us someplace to start. It helps to us, for us to build, maintain, and sustain a quick integrated response system, and we review these over time, six months a year, to see where we are and exactly what's going on with these. If you have any questions, let me know.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. With these goals that you've set, you know, for response times, which I applaud and I agree with, because you've got to have something to measure yourself against, if you find out that you're not meeting these benchmarks, are you going to be coming back to us with specific recommendations as to why you're not meeting them? If, for example, it means that, you know, you've got certain areas of the county that's, you know, got more call load than we have resources, that you're going to come back to us and share that information and do problem solving with us so that we can move the dial in the direction where you've set these benchmarks?
Correct, exactly. So this, this gives us a level to shoot for, and then we can see where we are and which way we need to go. I think we're very good at our, our first incident, but our resilience, can you, you can probably use a little help over time with one of the first things we talked about is, you know, that first call, we're getting there, the average of about twelve minutes, but as our resources get depleted, a second and a third call, that's where we don't have the resources and it's taking longer for responders to get there.
I'm just going to make a recommendation to you. Keep us close, keep us updated, come back and let me know where you, where you are with this, because I think this is important. I think people in the county are going to be interested in, in these response times, and particularly in relationship to where they live and what type of response time related to what type of incident, so, good stuff.
And this was also one of the steps that the, when the study came through just last month, that one of the things they recommended that we officially get it adopted, we've been talking about for several months, obviously, I think I've talked about it everybody.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Hodge.
One question, Chief. This may be an amalgamation question, but where this all comes from. Is this from the study? Is we comparing to other jurisdictions, the area? In other words, where are the numbers, where's our targets coming from? I know if we don't meet them, where we go perhaps, and I think David's right, but about where we've set our sights to begin with?
These, these response times, the ninety-second one for dispatch is the national average.
Okay.
The ten, the ten-minute thirty-second one is for the first responders, is borrowed from some of the other jurisdictions, Chesterfield and such, because the fire department usually, when they're closer, can get there closer time. The fourteen-and-a-half-minute one was one that was adopted by the Rescue Squad and Dr. LaPettina as a goal that they have set to try to reach.
Good question. I sat with Mr. Chief Singer and Mr. Beach, and Pat and myself sat, and we kind of talked about this, and Alan had been doing some work over a period of time for a while, and we felt this was a good starting point. I will tell you that there's some challenges that need to be fixed in our software that, give us some challenges to be able to get good data, so that's something we'll have have to figure out as a Board as we move forward, and I could, we'd be remiss in not saying that if it was, after it was pointed out to me. So, thank you, Alan, for, for what you do to help us get this number started. Thank you, Chief, and I'm glad we're drawing the line in the sand, so to speak. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Singer.
Aye.
All right, we'll go back to page. At this time, we're going to have a report on our Strategic Action Plan Monthly Update, found on page two fourteen.
This item is found on page two fourteen.
Go ahead.
And there'll be several items that I'm referring to. The Chairman and I met, and I can't, I think it was last week, and we went through all of the items that are outstanding on the staff task list and assigned dates to them, so we're relaying to you also some of those dates that have been scheduled. So, on priority LD two, update of the comprehensive plan, the item is to conduct a workshop with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission to discuss the options of review versus update, the legal requirements, and the Board of Supervisors' expectations. It said that we would do that in September of two thousand fifteen, and we're proposing that we hold a joint workshop on Tuesday, September first, from six PM to seven PM, right prior to the Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Altman is also checking out this date with the Planning Commission, so that's our tentative date, and we'll be polling the Board to see if they're available to have that, that meeting as defined in the Strategic Action Plan. The next item is priority EC one, which is to create the Economic Development Plan. We are to have the plan complete on, in August of two thousand fifteen, and we are meeting that requirement. We will bring it back to you on August thirty-first for a workshop discussion of that, and we will then ask you to adopt it, if you're ready, on September twenty-first at your next meeting. On priority EC two, which is to redirect and reconstitute the EDA, you will be getting recommendations on the EDA on August thirty-first with the Economic Development Plan, and depending on when you adopt the plan, we will then be able to start developing those job descriptions and a charter for the EDA, if that's, if that's what you wish for staff to do once you adopt the Economic Development Plan. And on EC three, which is locate or expand at least one major business, again, once the economic development is planned, that will trigger EC three to begin. Then on page number two sixteen, it says that we will present to the Board the recommendation from the Virginia Department of Fire Program Study in January of two thousand sixteen. We expect to receive that back from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs in November, late November. They have to take it to the, their Board for their Board approval, so it'll be late November when we get that study back. So, depending on our scheduling, we may be able to bring that to you in December. It depends on what we have already scheduled for those meetings in December, but we could do that. The next item is found on page two eighteen. I just, just a reminder that your next quarterly meeting with the school board is on September fourteenth, and it will be in this building at seven, this room at seven PM. The next item is priority ED two, which is determine the Board's role in workforce development, development strategies that supports the Economic Development Plan, and that will be starting once the Economic Development Plan is adopted, which is coming soon. Wanted to point out that on page two twenty, under FA three, review and update the county's financial policies, including school funding and capital projects. Both of those policies have now been adopted by the Board, and it's complete. On page two twenty-one, finalize the agreement with Cops Creek Regional Reservoir. These dates have changed. I've discussed with, with the Board on an earlier occasion. We, you had, we had originally, in the plan, we have that the Board would adopt the agreement in June of fifteen. We think now that will be more likely September of two thousand fifteen that you adopted. That, of course, then moves out, implementing the agreement. And then on the priority IN four, with this infrastructure, develop a communications infrastructure master plan for the public safety communication system. We had originally said that we would ask you to authorize the county administrator to execute a contract for issuing the RFP. We expect that to come forward to you on August third. It says there sometime in July of fifteen. We're bringing it to your August third meeting. And then priority IN six, develop an IT master plan for the county's internal services. It says, number two, we were going to issue an RFP. We're not going to issue an RFP. The IT Director is doing that in consultation with our consultants that we already have a contract with, and they're doing it with the IT Director at no charge to the county. So, that changes that priority steps slightly, and that's all I have to report on the Strategic Action Plan update. Stand ready to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Very helpful. Thank you.
At this time, we'll have our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, well, I'll close the second public comment period. County administrators, comments?
In the meeting that I had, that I had with the Chairman, with the number of items that we have coming before the Board, we're requesting that the Board start their meeting on August third and August thirty-first at six PM, so we want to poll the Board to see if that would be okay to start the meetings on August third and August thirty-first at six PM. We won't poll you now, but we'll, we'll do that in a poll. And then, as I already mentioned, we have, we will be polling you to see your availability on September first for that workshop with the Planning Commission.
The August, Pat, I don't want an August thirty-first meeting, let them, that is actually our September meeting?
That, oh, yes, thank you.
So, it's not two?
Right, that's not two meetings in August. The August thirty-first meeting is your September meeting because the holiday fell on September seventh, and so we moved it back to August thirty-first. So, that is your, that is your September meeting, thank you. But we're asking, we will poll you and ask you if you're available to start those meetings.
I think if we start at six, with the action pack, and we're going to have one, one other item to add on to one of the workshops that Mr. Williams requested tonight.
Okay, and so, and-
I'll be brief.
Yeah, but we still got, still going.
Yeah.
But we want to make sure it's on there.
Yeah.
Okay?
And that's all my comments that I have.
Any Board comments?
Mr. Chairman, very quickly, Mr. Williams was elected to Chairman of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission in our last meeting this past week, and he, as usual, immediately began to canvas the jurisdictional representatives to move RR PDC in the direction of what he calls meetings that matter. And, and the intent is to take a hard look at what PDC does, should do, and maybe should be not doing anymore of, and I salute him for leading that. Secondly, the Social Services Board will be advertising its public, its regular meeting since forward, both on the county website, but we now understand that we need to put it in the newspaper, but a one advertisement in the newspaper listing the entire year's dates is okay. We don't have to pay every single month to do that. Third thing is the emergency service folks, Chief Singer, Alan Beach, Floyd, et cetera, will be on July the twenty-first doing shelter training for emergencies for the county. For a large-scale disaster, it'll be done at the high school, and for small-scale disasters, it'll be done at the Rescue Squad building. And finally, the public hearing at Luckstone is tomorrow night at seven o'clock. This is a public meeting they have every quarter to allow the public to know what Luckstone intends to do, is doing, and to allow the public to make comment or complaints, et cetera, about the operations of the quarries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, I have a question. So, the Luckstone meeting is at their Goochlin Headquarters or their Palatine Headquarters?
Palatine.
Thank you. Couple of quick comments. First of all, with all the storms and the rain that Mr. Williams and I talk about, which has grown all the grass, which makes us unhappy, a no-air fire EMS, and police have been very busy, and I applaud them because with all the trees and power losses and all those things going on, it's been quite a, quite a crazy summer. Hopefully, it settles down some, stops raining, to be honest. The last thing is, I had the blessing to attend the fireworks show put on by Mr. Childress and his organization. I actually sent in the dunking tank, so next year, hopefully, if they have it back, they will ask some of us else to get in the dunking tank and raise some funds to, for a good cause, so, you know. Pardon?
Wounded Warrior.
It was, his charity does benefit the Wounded Warriors. If you saw the article that Laura had in the paper, I think it basically showed them presenting a check to the Wounded Warriors. Good turnout, weather was kind of iffy, but still a good turnout, and thought a good family event, so just thought I'd share that with you. Any other comments?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to take a roll call?
Nope.
You don't need a roll call on there.
I'm learning.